I'd like to call the meeting order. Everyone, please rise for a short prayer and salute to the flag. God grant us the wisdom to make those decisions that are in the best interest of all of our residents. May the heavenly Father of us all bless those who have given the ultimate sacrifice in service to our nation, and may He watch over and protect our servicemen and women now guarding the gates of freedom. Salute to the flag.
I plead the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the people for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice,
Terry's statement of publication?
Yes, take notice that this regular meeting of the mayor and borough council being held on this eighth day of February 2016 has been advertised and posted in courts with open public meetings act, chapter 231, public law 1975.
Roll call.
Councilperson Buchanan.
Here.
Grillo.
Here.
Kilpatrick.
Here.
Limbo.
Here.
Novak.
Here.
Rittenhouse.
Here. I move that the following minutes be approved on roll call vote, the December 14 grievance hearing and executive session.
Second.
Councilperson Buchanan.
Yes.
Grillo.
Yes.
Kilpatrick.
Yes.
Limbo.
Yes.
Novak.
Yes.
Rittenhouse.
Yes. Okay. Yes, we have the great pleasure tonight of swearing in a new officer. Would Michael Porigi please come up along with your family?
Can you carry the flag for me? Thank you. Because we can't really see. So we're going to shift to the center of the room right down here. And I'm going to sign some more. Do you want to bring it down? Oh. If he drops the flag, we fire him. Sorry. It's okay. I can get closer. Repeat after me, I.
I. Michael Porigi.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear truth, allegiance, and faith to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the authority of the people.
And to the authority of the people.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And partially.
officer? And partially.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, mayor and council, thank you very much.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Of police officer.
Of police officer.
Of the Borough of Saraval.
Of the Borough of Saraval.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So let me go.
Okay.
As you see, we just sworn one of our newest officers, Officer Michael Porigi. It's been a long road, correct? I mean, it would say.
Slightly.
Slightly. It's his lifelong dream, goal, to be a member of the Saraval Police Department. In order to get here, began as a member of the Saraval Police Auxiliary.
Correct.
Dispatcher over in South River.
Right.
And also a member of the Mills County Sheriff's Department before becoming a member of the Saraval Police Department. And one of the only other comments I just want to make is, one of the most important acts that Mike made tonight was that is taking that oath. Because that oath is really an affirmation, it's a bond between Mike and now you, residents of Saraval. It's a contract. It's his ethical obligation to fulfill out his responsibilities fully as a member of the Saraval Police Department with honor, integrity, and professionalism. I'm quite certain that Mike will do that. Glad to see that his parents and his family members are here to cheer him on tonight, congratulate him, and we as well. Thank you very much.
Take a few pictures there. Congratulations. Congratulations, Officer Porigi. Ladies and gentlemen, Officer Michael Porigi. given many years of their time to the Borough of Saraval. First, I'm going to ask the council to join me up to the front.
First, can we have Mr. Courtney Moore come up?
Courtney has been serving over. Turn around to get on the camera and take some pictures. Courtney has served 20 years with the Borough of Saraval with the Human Relations Commission. And tonight, we're presenting Courtney with a certificate of appreciation presented by the mayor and borough council. For his 20 years of dedicated service to the Borough of Saraval, your efforts have enriched us generously because the community possesses no greater treasure than the dedicated service of its people. Courtney, I want to thank you for giving your time and energy to the Borough and the Human Relations Commission, and thank you for all that you do for us. Congratulations. Unfortunately, Martha couldn't show on behalf of Martha, the Human Relations Commission will be accepting a presentation. It says, "Presented by the mayor and council to Martha Hardle. For her years of dedicated service to the Human Relations Commission and Commission on Aging of the Borough of Saraval, your efforts have enriched us generously because the community possesses no greater treasure than the dedicated service of its people." Signed this date, 2016. So, on behalf of the council, we thank Martha for her service and thank you for accepting on her behalf. Thank you. And Martha will turn 98 this coming Saturday.
On behalf of the Human Relations Commission, we'd like to also present Martha Hardle with this certificate for dedication and wonderful being.
And on behalf of the Human Relations Commission, we'd like to present this to Courtney Moore for his dedication and commitment not only to Saraval, but to the commission and its folks. Thank you.
Lynda, you want to introduce the other members of the Human Relations Commission?
Sure. Could we have Ms. Moore come up and take some pictures as well?
We know he doesn't do this alone. We know that you're right behind him, right next to him, and stand right in front of him. So this is for you and for everything that you've done for us. We love you.
Thank you very much. This all started back with Mayor McCormick. And so I've served Mayor McCormick, I've served Mayor Zagata, I've served Mayor O'Brien, Mayor O'Brien, Mayor O'Brien. However, this is not a Courtney show. This whole thing is about the commission itself. And our members here have served, and I'd like to acknowledge our present, brand-new chairperson, Pat Mady. Our vice chair is Lynda Schiffman. And there are a couple of other members we have here, Gay, our past Chairperson, Dr. Rene Edmonds. Thank you. And Willie Holder. Thank you very much. Of course, as Lynda said, doing this for 25 years is not by myself, it's by the commission, but also our vacations have been planned around this. She even tells me I can't get sick on a meeting night. So that's from my wife, and I say thank you very much to her. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we're going to have a presentation by Frank Lucchese of the PSENG.
Thank you. Members of council, council president, thank you for having us here today. My name is Frank Lucchese. I'm Regional Public Affairs Manager for PSENG. With me this evening from PS is our district manager that runs the gas operations, that actually takes care of Saraval, and that is Sam Campanella. So we're here today to kind of bring you up to speed on a new initiative that was just passed by the Board of Public Utilities for PSENG. And we're also here to ask for some relief for an ordinance that you have regarding restoration. Let me bring you up to speed with the program itself. We recently were awarded by the Board of Public Utilities, a program called the Gas System Modernization Program. It's a $905 million program that is going to be working over the next three years. The work behind the program is to replace some aging cast iron main and some bare steel main that is in our gas delivery system. As some of you know, we have some cast iron main that's probably well over 100 years old that's in the system. If you can imagine, we have quite a bit throughout our service territory. But for the first three years of the program, we're looking to do a total of about 510 miles, which will help out about 38,000 customers, replace those, not only the gas main service in the roadway, but also what we call the lateral feeds that feed the customers. We're looking to do approximately 54 to about 170 miles per year, excuse me, to get us to about the 510 mile mark. So each project is budgeted. When we looked at doing the program over the five years, we took the priority areas first, some of those areas that are prone to flooding, that we've had some situations with system. Our biggest nightmare is when the gas main system gets infiltrated with water. It becomes an absolute nightmare for Sam and his group to kind of purge that system and then individually take care of all the residents that are there. So Saraval is one of the first towns on the list. We're looking to replace about three and a half miles of gas main in Saraval to the tune of about $4 million project that's going on. And as I mentioned, each, excuse me, each project that we get is budgeted pretty tightly. Board of Public Utilities really monitoring how we spend our money. Obviously, we want most of our money to go into the infrastructure. So we got that going. We recently met with Business Administrator Dan Frankel and Jay Cornell from your engineering group to discuss the project, fill them in on what was going on, provide maps and whatnot. And one of the issues that we ran into was the ordinance for curb-to-curb restoration on the roads. Obviously, as I mentioned, most of the work that we want to get done is into the infrastructure. So we were proposing a curb to, it's about a 10-foot, it'll be from curb to about a foot to two feet outside the cuts, also including the lateral cuts. It will be one smooth infrared cut from pretty much just maybe outside the center line of road over to the curb. Mr. Frankel asked about, the concern at that time was about, you know, the quality of the work we do. Obviously, PSENG, we're not going to go anywhere, but we talked about a guarantee on our project, you know, on the roadwork that we're doing, and we'll be more than happy to offer a guarantee to your, you know, to your recommendation. But we talked internal about doing that as well, and we have no issue with that. As we said, we value the partnership with Saraval, everything we do with Mr. Frankel and the mayor, and we obviously aren't going to go anywhere, so we want to kind of keep that going forward. So with that being said, that's kind of what we're looking at today. It's a great project, it's going to be great for the homeowners. You know, as I said, we worked with engineering to work out the details, you know, as we move along, but that is one of the issues that we wanted to bring before you today. So I think I covered everything right, Sam? I think I covered any questions at this point?
You have another question?
And if we have technical, that's why Sam's here.
We spoke very briefly out in the hall there. So you were looking at, it's a $4 million project, and what is it, three and a half miles?
About three and a half miles of cast iron or bare steel main. It's going to be one or the other, yeah.
And what you were referencing, so that the public at home knows that, we have an ordinance that would state that the road would have to be, anytime you're making a certain amount of cuts or certain amount, you would be doing from curb to curb.
Correct.
So obviously, that's a massive expense, and we want to try and make sure that we can get these replacements done. My only concern is making sure that in some of the other developments, like Laurel Park being one, over time, even if you're not doing an entire roadway, you might start to see some depression in that road where the new roadway and the old roadway works. Now, right now, you would have to do that whole thing, and I'm not sure, in your conversations with Mr. Frankel, how long would you be looking to guarantee that road works, that you're not going curb to curb, or you're at least asking us for forgiveness of that curb to curb? How many years would be looking for a guarantee on that?
Whatever council would be proposing, Mr. Frankel.
I think we, myself and Jay spoke about, usually somebody like PSENG would guarantee for a one-year period of time.
Yes.
I think Jay and I spoke, and we felt comfortable that if council was comfortable, that we would like PSENG to guarantee it for five years.
A five-year. I mean.
So we would guarantee that for five years for you?
A five-year.
Yeah.
I think that's great to turn around and actually make some investment here in some aging infrastructure. Because we don't want to have any type of devastation. The road would have to come up anyway, so, and I do feel you do excellent work, and to have that five-year guarantee versus that one-year guarantee. And then you had mentioned that instead of just handling the laterals, the way that it's been done in the past, you would actually be going 10 feet in regardless of where that lateral cut was made.
Yes.
Because there was like some trenching in some areas of town, and then you had those lateral cutouts.
Correct.
Just be going from curb all the way over.
And that's a little bit of the difference that you've seen with the older stuff. You're right, it was just that lateral feed and the main replaced. This will actually be from curb to outside line, which will cover everything. So it'll be really like a smooth cut, it's just not going to be, you know.
Won't be.
You know, infrared now, and milled and paved, the technology's a little bit better too, with really ensuring that the road is done correctly.
Okay, thank you. Those were my questions. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Did I miss anything? I don't know. Good.
So what do you need from the governing body right now to move forward?
So I believe this is the way we understand it, you have that ordinance that's curb-to-curb, and we're asking you that to move forward with the project, and obviously, we'll be working with Mr. Frankel and the engineering team to start to move the project forward. We're looking to see if for this project, we want to do a curb, you know, it's usually about a foot to, you know, two feet outside of the main cut. And so council knows too, most of the mains are closer to the curb line. Some of them are actually in the curb right of way, they're not even in the road, but most of them are along the curb line, so it's not in the center of the street. So you have that center curb out to them. So that's what we're asking for as a condition of improvement.
If the mayor and council wish, I'll just sit down with Jay and go through the amendments, and then hopefully bring back to that proposed change at the next meeting, if that's so.
I think, Mayor, I don't think it's a change to the ordinance, I think it would just be a resolution granting a waiver. In the ordinance itself, it does allow the council to grant waivers for different parts of the ordinance for the public utilities. So I think if everyone agrees, you could just have a resolution at your next meeting memorializing the action for this particular project for public service.
Right, so it would be just this particular project.
Yes.
Yes. Project by project.
I'll sit down with Jay between now and then to go through that.
You could just have it on the consent agenda at the next meeting.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying that too.
Does anyone object to that? Anyone have any comments? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Thanks very much.
Leave it on, yeah, keep it on, yeah.
Next, we're going to have a public hearing on the following ordinances. Open the public portion for ordinance 318-16.
Let me go ahead and read that into record.
Yes, please.
This is a public hearing on the following ordinance, is ordinance number 318-16, and ordinance fixing salaries for certain borough officials, officers, and employees for the years 2014, 15, and 16.
And let me know that this is just a housekeeping issue.
Yes. Anyone have any questions? If not, entertain a motion.
Yes, I move the public portion be closed, the ordinance adopted on second and final reading and advertised according to law.
Roll call.
Terry, did you hear me? If I have to speak a little louder though, because it's not going to pick up. Councilperson Buchanan?
Yes.
Excuse me. Grillo?
Yes.
Kilpatrick?
Yes.
Limbo?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Rittenhouse. And I'm sorry, I didn't go according to the new rules of council order. Next time, I'll be there. I'll get it. I'll get it.
Ordinance 319-16, Terry?
An ordinance, the Borough of Saraval and County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the waterfront redevelopment plan and master plan.
Like to open up to the public, ordinance 319-16. Anyone have any comments, questions, concerns? If not, Councilman Grillo?
I move the public hearing be closed, the ordinance adopted on second and final reading and advertised according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Grillo?
Yes.
Buchanan?
Yes.
Kilpatrick?
Yes.
Limbo?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Rittenhouse?
Yes.
Ordinance number 320-16, calendar year 2015, ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and establish a cap bank.
Open the public portion for ordinance 320-16. Anyone have questions? If not, Councilwoman Novak?
I move the public portion be closed, the ordinance adopted on second and final reading and advertised according to law.
Second.
I'm sorry, who's second then? Thank you.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Novak?
Yes.
Buchanan?
Yes.
Grillo?
Yes.
Kilpatrick?
Yes.
Limbo?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Rittenhouse. And I'm sorry, I didn't go according to the new rules of council order. Next time, I'll be there. I'll get it. I'll get it.
Ordinance 319-16, Terry?
An ordinance, the Borough of Saraval and County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending the waterfront redevelopment plan and master plan.
Like to open up to the public, ordinance 319-16. Anyone have any comments, questions, concerns? If not, Councilman Grillo?
I move the public hearing be closed, the ordinance adopted on second and final reading and advertised according to law.
Roll call.
Discussion, please.
Yes, sir.
Which is our, if we follow, what should be done on every ordinance. I have a question. This ordinance, once it's on the agenda, cannot be taken off. You've stricken from here the clause that says, "But may be withdrawn or amended by the mover at any time before discussion."
Correct. This would actually, as you just noted regarding discussion, it would allow every council person to have an input before something be taken off the table by the mover. So they could still discuss after, you'd have a discussion portion, and then afterwards, you could remove it if you choose. Otherwise, you could just remove it beforehand.
Where does it say that it can be removed?
Well, it says, "May be withdrawn or amended by the mover at any time before discussion."
That's stricken from the.
That's before discussion. So every ordinance that we have, there's a discussion portion like you just discussed. So after the discussion, you can pull it. And I'd like to refer over to a council.
I think the purpose of this was to, as you said, Mr. Rittenhouse, there is going to be some discussion before each and every ordinance, but I think the purpose of this was to ensure that whoever voted to move the ordinance and to bring it on for final vote would then be asked to vote on the final adoption. It doesn't indicate that there's not going to be any discussion. Discussion's always allowed on ordinance. This just simply clarifies that when you move to introduce, that.
Excuse me. Grillo?
Yes.
Kilpatrick?
Yes.
Lembo?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Rittenhouse, and I'm sorry, I didn't go according to the new rules of council order, next time I'll be there. I'll get it, I'll get it.
Ordinance 319-16, Terry?
An ordinance, the borough of Saraville County of Middlesex State of New Jersey, amending the waterfront redevelopment plan and master plan.
Like to open up to the public, ordinance 319-16. Anyone have any comments, questions, concerns? If not, Councilman Grillo?
I move the public hearing to be closed, the ordinance adopted on second and final reading and advertised according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Grillo?
Yes.
Buchanan?
Yes.
Kilpatrick?
Yes.
Lembo?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Rittenhouse?
Yes.
Ordinance number 320-16, calendar year 2015, ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and establish a cap bank.
Open the public portion for ordinance 320-16, anyone have questions? If not, Councilwoman Novak?
I move the public portion to be closed, the ordinance adopted on second and final reading and advertised according to law.
Second.
I'm sorry, who's second, thank you.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Novak?
Yes.
Buchanan?
Yes.
Grillo?
Yes.
Kilpatrick?
Yes.
Lembo?
Yes.
Rittenhouse?
Yes.
Public hearing on ordinance number 321-16, and ordinance amending the revised rules and order of the council of the borough of Saraville.
Open up public portion for ordinance 321-216. No questions? I move the public portion to be closed, and the ordinance approved on second and final reading and advertised according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Discussion, please?
Yes, sir.
Which is our, if we follow, what should be done on every ordinance. I have a question. This ordinance, once it's on the agenda, cannot be taken off. You've stricken from here the clause that says, may, but may be withdrawn or amended by the mover at any time before discussion.
Correct, this would actually, as you just noted regarding discussion, it would allow every council person to have an input before something be taken off the table by the mover, so they could still discuss after, you'd have a discussion portion, and then afterwards, you could remove it if you choose, otherwise, you could just remove it beforehand.
Where does it say that it can be removed?
Well, it says may be withdrawn or amended by the mover at any time before discussion.
That's stricken from the...
That's before discussion, so every ordinance that we have, there's a discussion portion like you just discussed, so after the discussion, you can pull it. And I'd like to refer over to the council.
I think the purpose of this was to, as you said, Mr. Rittenhouse, there is going to be some discussion before each and every ordinance, but I think the purpose of this was to ensure that whoever voted to move the ordinance and to bring it on for final vote would then be asked to vote on the final adoption. It doesn't indicate that there's not going to be any discussion. Discussion's always allowed on ordinance, this just simply clarifies that when you move to introduce, that the person that moves to, or when you adopt, you will then ask that person to move it also.
That still didn't answer the question. Why are we taking out that sentence, that clause?
Well, again, I think...
You're the one who wrote it, why are you taking it out?
Because it was, I think it's a little more clearer that the person who moved the ordinance through introduction is then going to be asked to move the adoption at the same time, and I think for clarity's sake, this is what is, what was asked of me at the...
All right, so what we're doing is we're adding work to the clerk, because now she has to use a different order of procedure for taking votes.
I'm not sure you're adding any additional vote or any additional work, she still has to take the roll call, all you're doing is changing the...
The order.
The order of it to include an alphabetical order. If anything, it's going to promote efficiency from the clerk.
Are we going to change this then for any motion that's made?
Again, this is just for the ordinance...
Just for the ordinance, so we are changing, so on this, she has to follow one set of rules, and whenever there's a motion, it's another set of rules.
No, again, I believe it says that when a motion has been made and seconded, so I think it refers to all motions, you know, so-called on resolutions and on ordinances. The purposes of this is to ensure that the individual who moved introduction and then moves, wants to adopt it, will then get the opportunity to move it at adoption.
In other words, you just want to change parliamentary procedure?
That is, that's not changing, there's nothing in parliamentary procedure that says how a roll call vote is taken, that's strictly up to the governing body.
This is the rules of the order of the council, Mr. Rittenhouse. Sorry, this is just strictly the rules of the order of council that you've had, that have been amended over the course of time.
Many times.
At the discretion of the mayor and council.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Councilperson Buchanan?
Yes.
Grillo?
Yes.
Kilpatrick?
Yes.
Lembo?
No.
Novak?
Yes.
Rittenhouse?
No.
New business?
Introduction to the following ordinances, ordinance number 322-16, an ordinance appropriating $150,000 for various improvements of the sanitary sewer system for and by the borough of Saraville County of Middlesex State of New Jersey.
Councilwoman Rittenhouse?
I move that the ordinance be approved on first reading, advertised according to law, and a public hearing to be held on February 22, 2016.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Rittenhouse?
Yes.
Buchanan?
Yes.
Grillo?
Yes.
Kilpatrick?
Yes.
Lembo?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Ordinance number 323-16, and ordinance supplementing and amending Chapter 13 of the revised general ordinances of the borough of Saraville to amend Section 13-7.3.
Councilwoman Kilpatrick?
Oh, I'm sorry. Hold on. I move the ordinance to be approved on first reading and advertised according to law and public hearing to be held on February 22, 2016.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Kilpatrick?
Yes.
Councilwoman Buchanan?
Yes.
Grillo?
Yes.
Lembo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Novak?
Yes.
Rittenhouse?
Yes.
Introduction to the following ordinance, ordinance number 324-16, and ordinance supplementing and amending Chapter 2 of the revised general ordinances of the borough of Saraville, Section 2-33.6.
I move the ordinance to be approved on first reading and advertise according to law and public hearing to be held on February 22, 2016.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Kilpatrick?
Yes.
Councilwoman Buchanan?
Yes.
Grillo?
Yes.
Lembo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Novak?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rittenhouse?
Yes.
Now, I'd like to open up the public portion for consent agenda resolutions, any questions or comments on the consent agenda resolutions? Yes, sir. Please state your name and address.
Jim Brown, 854 Sycamore Drive in Tinton Falls, New Jersey.
Okay.
I'm representing Altech Building Corporation, GeoPeak, and Easy Energy, and it's regarding the consent agenda 2016-51. We were a proposer on the solar system for the Warden Town Water Treatment Plant, and you have a resolution in front of you to award that contract tonight to a different vendor. Our proposal was for a much larger system, therefore providing much larger savings to the city and township, because we engineered it to be much more productive. We also offered other options in case the floating system is not approved. And in New Jersey, the DEP hasn't approved any floating systems of this size, they've approved very tiny systems and typically object to anything going on water, especially, you know, it's going to shade the water and the fish and things in the water. So our savings are much, much greater than the competitor. Our electric rate is lower, at 8.5 cents, it has a 2% escalator, but the competition's at nine cents with a varying escalator. It starts out at .75 and increases over time at various rates up to 1.75. So our point is that we provide much more savings, much more options, much lower risk to township, because we propose a rooftop solar system on the building that exists there, that can easily be built right away and start savings. Going through the DEP to approve a floating system on a water body is going to take, could take as much as a year, and there's a big chance it could not be approved. We also propose a ground-mounted system, which we know was objected to before, we also included a cost to totally replace all of the trees that would be moved, removed, we would plant them elsewhere in the city to make up for any loss of any trees, and again, provide tremendous savings to the township. Our savings are millions of dollars more than the competitor. In their own proposal, they say that they can only save about a million dollars. Our system saves between 2.7 million additionally, up to 4.2 million additionally, if all the options are looked at. And the RFP did allow you to propose both a floating system, a ground-mounted system, a roof-mounted system, and we proposed all those options to provide the least amount of risk to the township and the most savings. So all we're asking is that our proposals be more fully evaluated, look at the savings, and then make a decision on voting on a resolution to move forward with that particular project.
All right, thank you. Here you go.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the governing body, I mean, from the public? If not, close the public portion?
So moved.
Oh, Barbara?
Barbara Hill-Covens, 22 Schenectady Street. I believe you should table this until...
More investigation can be procured, after listening to this gentleman, it makes the residents wonder about it. So I would table it and renew the proposals on the bids, because he sounds pretty feasible, and probably more investigation should be done. The other item is 2016-53. I thought that was decided upon the last council meeting, that SARAH's meetings were to be held in this room and televised. And that was decided upon. Now it's this room or 310, and if 310 doesn't have the capabilities. So, Mr. Buchanan, you're always looking for transparency, so I think there should be transparency, and it should be televised and should be held here, like all the other meetings are held. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? If not, oh, Mr. Diaddio. Please state your name.
Mike Diaddio, and I'm the chairman of SARAH. I didn't get a chance to attend the last meeting, I understand that the council decided we're going to have our meetings in council chambers, or 310, or what did you decide?
Mike, there's a resolution, there's a resolution that's asking that the Saraville Economic Redevelopment Agency hold its meetings...
All boards and commissions.
Planning, zoning, and SARAH.
All boards hold their meetings either in this room, 310, or 308, so that there is some transparency. I had the opportunity to speak to Mr. Baker also regarding this, and that was the wishes of the mayor and council at the time, as last week.
Okay, I've been before this board, before this council before, and I've explained to you with my attorney's advice, that you do not have the authority as to where we hold our meetings. I also told you that we are in favor of being televised. However, we are comfortable in the room we're in, and that's the room we're going to stay in. Now, if you'd like to put a camera in that room, that's fine, we're in agreement with that, we'll be on television. But I'm going to have to insist that a switch be there to turn the camera off when we go into closed. If you can do that, the commissioners are in agreement that the meetings will be televised. However, they will be in 308. You do not have the authority or the jurisdiction over my board. That's it. You could sit up there and decide Obama's going to be impeached, and you could all vote on it, and you could all agree on it, but it's not going to happen. Our meetings will be in 308, you're welcome to televise them, if there's a switch to turn them off, they're enclosed, if not, the meetings will be elsewhere where we decide they're going to be. And I've told you before, if we decide to have the meetings at Woodbridge, we will have them at Woodbridge. So you guys make a decision tonight what you want to do, 308 with a switch to turn them off during closed, or that's it. That's your decision. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public wish to speak? If not, entertain a motion.
I move the public portion to be closed. And the consent agenda be approved on roll call.
I have a question for Mr. Cornell. In reference to Ms. Covens' question and Mr. Brown's presentation, are you familiar with his RFP submission?
Yes, I am.
And was there a reason why his firm wasn't chosen?
37.
Yes.
Again, I know that, Jay, you're recommending that we proceed with what's on the consent agenda, correct? I just caution the council from discussing too much, in light of the fact there may be a bid objection or complaint filed, but it's my, I think the question's directed to Mr. Cornell, should be, is this what you're recommending that's in the best interest of the borough residents of the borough of Saraville, is that correct?
That's correct. Just for the council's information, Mr. Kornowski, Mr. Frankel, myself, and Mr. Samuel had interviews with both the proposers for the project, there were two proposals that were received. There was a concern about the size of the system. Our opinion was that Easy Energy and Altech, which is Mr. Brown's company, they had proposed a system that was larger than was necessary to serve the existing water facility. That's why it appeared that they have more savings. In speaking with the second bidder, they indicated that their intention was to provide a system to meet the demands of that facility, and that's really what the borough was looking for, we want to go through and have a solar system that is going to meet the demands of that facility. If you compare apples to apples, if you have the same sized system with both bidders and look at the rates that were provided, with the lower escalation rate, the bid that we're recommending provides a greater savings to the borough over the course of the 15-year power purchase agreement. With regard to other options, there was a concern about, if not, if it does not go on the lagoons, the other bidder proposed taking down trees in addition to having it on top of the rooftop at the water plant. That is a proposal that was submitted a number of years ago and was rejected by the council. The council did not want to go through and see trees removed to go through and put a solar system in, even if it meant having trees transplanted at a different location. So that was basically off the table, it's not something that we even wanted to present to the council, because we know your feelings from past projects, that you would not want to go through and have trees removed to allow a solar system be installed. In addition to that, there was a project done by the bidder recommending for the MCUA that was recently completed. That bidder is also proposing a partnership with a local school, the Middlesex Regional Educational Facility, they're proposing a partnership where they'll provide jobs to school-aged children in conjunction with their projects. There were a number of different things that we talked about when we interviewed both bidders, and we felt that the one we're recommending addressed the saving issue, provides greater savings to the borough, has a reputation as a good provider based upon work they did in Saraville, and also, they're looking to partnership with the local schools to possibly provide jobs for some of the students. So based on all those conditions, we felt that was the best bid for the borough.
Thank you. We had a motion on the table, was there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
We have to do roll call. Is there any other discussion?
Any other discussion on the consent agenda resolutions before we move forward?
Well, I, I would just like to say that, you know, I don't, I don't really care what room they meet in, I really will work very quickly to get a camera, I understand when you're, that it's easier with a board and commission to meet in 310 or 308, and then if, every time they go into closed session, they don't have to pick up all their stuff and move, so you'll need a kill switch in the room for the time. And I'm perfectly fine with that, but we really would like for transparency, you know, that, and we'll do our best to get that camera in 308 as soon as possible.
Prior, so, in addition to that comment, Mr. Diaddio, you were not here, and as an individual that serves on SARAH, at the last meeting, we had the discussion about having that a televised board. I voted yes in favor of that, but I was one of the individuals that made it clear that this chamber not be the only option here. 308, there's a lot of benefits to that board, and it makes it a lot easier for presentation and for us to hold our closed session and open session meetings. I agree with Mr. Diaddio's comment, and I, as a council person, want to see transparency, you might even want to call it hypertransparency. The way that this is written, it says that we want all boards and commissions, and I want to make that very clear and make sure that that's exactly what it says, requiring all boards, that's what it says here. It says all boards and commissions.
Including...
Just in the heading, the body, it clarifies planning, zoning, and SARAH, those are the three major boards that need to be televised, should be televised, well, two of them anyway.
And also indicates, because it provides an alternative, or...
Yes, it does.
...facility, okay, you saw that.
I did see that, but I...
I'm not in the throat of garbage.
While it specifically states in there, I personally feel all boards and commissions should have that televised clause in there, all boards and commissions. If we want to move towards transparency and make this not about an individual, which I feel like this last meeting was really made about an individual, it was made about Mr. Diaddio, it was made specifically about SARAH, and I really just don't think that's what real government, that's what good government is. If we're going to call for transparency on any board, it should be across, across the board, it should be any board, because all of them are conducting business for our residents, and we should be able to see all of that. And Barbara, I applaud you for coming up here time and time again for asking for that transparency, so I want to see that all boards and all commissions throughout this entire borough have that same transparency.
Mrs. Kilpatrick?
Barbara, Barbara?
It's closed.
They already closed it?
It's still open.
No, they closed it?
No, it's been closed.
We're actually discussing the resolutions right now.
Motion was made and seconded.
So I'll wait to the end of the meeting to discuss this, okay.
So, that's what I want to see, all the way across the board, and I do think it is important, because we do need to have a switch, an on and off switch, just in order to make sure that our meetings and all meetings can move at an efficient rate, to be able to turn that off rather than have to displace all the individuals, including the people that come as presenters, so that they can leave the room, we can take that, hit that switch, and then come back to our meeting as quickly as possible. And that way, there's not a lot of dead time and a lot of, like, static and stuff, and you're not looking at a blank screen. So I really want to see that move forward for all commissions and all boards. So I know that's what that, it's written as right now, but it, well, that's what many people are feeling. It's just going to be those particular boards. But I'd like all, not just the land use, not just SARAH. Let's, let's move for real. What? But I think it's important because I, I don't want to see this being a. Because I feel like it becomes political every single year. And I, and I'm curious because was this ever brought up prior to Mr. Diaddio being the chair? Or prior to the mayor when he was on it? Why is this always an issue now? I, I don't understand that. Why hasn't this been brought up year, you know, at the, the beginning of SARAH? When it was first brought, brought as a commission? But we have been now for years, so.
And a few years ago, we, the council did vote in favor of televising them, but they just didn't have the equipment there. We discussed it. So I'm going to instruct Dan to work with Tom to get a camera system in 308 as well since when you're having a discussion meeting like SARAH has, it's better to be in a round table than looking across over your shoulders and working back and forth. I believe that, that, you know, we've, we've allotted for this option in the resolution, so.
I think, I think it's a great move to have it, to have it televised and have that transparency. But I like to see it all the way, done all the way. Great.
Any other comments? If not, roll call.
Councilwoman Novak?
Yes.
Buchanan?
Yes.
Grillo?
Yes, on the agenda, the entire agenda or just that specific?
No, no, this is on the.
The entire agenda?
Consent agenda resolutions.
I vote yes on everything except 201648. As an animal rights supporter, I vote no on that for a variety of ethical reasons. Secondly, I vote no on 201653, which we just discussed. I voted no at the last meeting. I'm staying consistent with my vote. I don't believe that there's jurisdiction over SARAH in this. And I also think that this is nothing more than a political attack. It has been a political attack on SARAH and Mr. Diaddio from day one when this discussion started. And I also don't like the way that the, as, as written, it says room, room 310 or council chambers, not room 308, which was just discussed. I think there's a lot of flaws with how it's written. I don't buy into it, so I'm going to vote no for that as well.
Councilwoman Kilpatrick?
Yes.
Councilman Lembo?
Yes.
Councilman Rittenhouse?
Yes.
Thank you. At this point, I open the public portion on all items. Ms. Kilcombs?
I disagree with you. This is not an attack on Mr. Diaddio. He is not SARAH. This is all of SARAH, just because he's the chair, that's not him. And it wasn't intended just for him. This is SARAH in general, period. I've been attending meetings when it was first started by Mr. Zagata, Mayor Zagata, and he erected whatever or composed SARAH. And it had good intentions for economic redevelopment since we disbanded our industrial commissions, and it, we lost a lot of major industries and tax ratables. So it was important for SARAH to come out and get ratables. But SARAH has given exempts to everything, and all we brought in under SARAH has been cogeneration plants. And then now, a housing development. And each one is given total exemptions. But now, this last one really pushed my buttons on Highview because we're not giving anything towards education, towards children, towards the schools, and that's wrong. And that burden's going to be placed on the regular taxpayers in this community. When I attended SARAH meetings, I spent the majority of the time in the hallway because everything was under litigation and closed session, closed session, closed session. I only went to a few, I got tired. I said ridiculous, I get the message. They don't want the public there because everything is closed session, litigation. Now, under the Open Public Meetings Act, if you go into closed session, you have to say why you're going into closed session. Then when you come out, if anything has been conducted. Am I correct, Mr. Dupont? Now, are they exempt from the Open Public Meetings Act?
They're not exempt from the Open Public.
I don't think so. They think they're autonomous for everything, and they're not. They have to be accountable to the taxpayers and residents of this town, or that group SARAH could easily be disbanded. You people could disband it. So I just resent the attitude of it, and I resent on how it has been taking place. So it's not a political thing, Mrs. Kilpatrick. This has been going on way before, probably when you were a little tot under Mr. Zagata when he was mayor. So this has been going on for a long time, and who has? But it has to be more open, and the public has to be aware of what's going on with SARAH because the last few things have not been really acceptable. And that's why, Mr. Grillo, I know you're a new member in town and a new member there at council, but this is just to educate you on the history of it. So this is not personally against Mr. Diaddio. This is SARAH as an autonomous group, and I have problems with autonomous groups in the whole state of New Jersey. They feel that they're exempt with the authority, they could do what they want, and it's like the taxpayer be damned. But this time, it has to be accountable. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Well, for the record, I was 22 under Mr. Zagata's governor, mayoralship here. I don't think that qualifies me as a, as a tot, but I'll take that as a compliment. I must be aging very well. But for the record, I was 22, and I, I still believe, you know, that it's, it's the appearance here. I mean, when you turn around and you make an entire board about one individual, and that name gets evoked repeatedly over and over again, I'm all for the transparency, I'm voting for the transparency, I'm calling for the transparency. I want more transparency than probably any other council person up here. I, I just want room 308 also, as Mr. Grillo stated. So this no longer a tot has made my statements very clear. Mr. Diaddio?
Thank you, Mike Diaddio, chairman of SARAH. I'd just like to respond to Mrs. Kilcombs. As far as exemptions go, and as far as the public is concerned, and they should know this, and I'm sure all of you know this, SARAH doesn't grant anything. We make decisions on practically nothing. Everything that we decide are suggestions, we send it to the mayor and council, we send it to the planning board. We pick a developer, we make the deal, we send it to the council. You guys vote on it. We have nothing to say about it. It's just a suggestion. You don't like it, you send it back. Before we go into closed session, which when we discuss litigation and contract negotiations, it's not just litigation. It's enclosed for a reason, it's to protect the residents of this town. And before we go into close, we read, we read the statement of publication to go into close. We follow procedure. When you get the camera in the room, you'll see it. Mrs. Kilcombs doesn't come to the meetings, and she's correct. Most of our meetings are done enclosed because most of what we do are contract negotiations. So I don't understand what this big close cloak of darkness is about SARAH. It's not that important of a board. The most important board you have in this town is the Board of Adjustment. It's the zoning board. For those of you who don't know too much about land use, the zoning board can make something possible that you say is not possible. If you have something that's not permitted in a zone, like drive-throughs at McDonald's, drive-throughs are not permitted in Saraville, the zoning board has the power and authority to say, we disagree with you, we're going to allow it. SARAH doesn't have that authority. The planning board doesn't have that authority. The zoning board is the most powerful board. That's the board that really should be on TV. That's the board I was chairman of at one time. They have the authority to make changes whether you like it or not. Okay, SARAH does not. SARAH makes suggestions. We're doing everything by the book. I welcome the camera to be in SARAH, but we are going to stay in room 308. Thank you.
Thank you. I still think it should be 310 and not 308. So if you don't want that your oval table, whatever, it's still a lot better. But I agree with him. It does have to come back to the council and the planning board for approval. But I feel that you act upon their recommendation. I have never seen the council, in all the years that SARAH has been created, for the council to disagree with SARAH. So whatever they recommend, you take as gospel. So maybe the onus is on the council, should look a little bit more into it, especially by giving Highview. I watched that vote. It was just one, two, three, yes. You probably didn't even think about it, study it, on the impact it would have with no residential development paying for education. And I told you, you sat a president right then. If I was a developer, I'd ask for the same thing. And I'll bet my bottom dollar that they will be allowed, and even if they take you to court because you allowed it, you gave it to Highview. And that's not going to stop. And what you did, and you affected all the residents because our taxes have no place to go but up to, to counteract that. Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments from the public? If not, entertain a motion.
Move the public portion be closed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Thank you. Anything for executive? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'd like to call the agenda meeting to this order. All rise. Salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Terry, statement of publication?
Take notice at this rate, this agenda meeting of the mayor and borough council being held on this eighth day of February 2016 has been advertised and posted in courts with Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975.
Roll call?
Councilpersons Buchanan, Grillo?
Here.
Kilpatrick?
Here.
Lembo?
Yeah.
Novak?
Here.
Rittenhouse?
Here.
Okay, we're going to go through the ordinances. Anyone have any questions on ordinance 32216? 32316? 32416? Okay, committee reports, administration and finance, Councilwoman Novak?
Yes. I don't, applications, make a motion to approve bingo licenses as stated on the agenda for one, two, three, four, and five.
Any questions? Any objections? Okay, next.
Okay, we received a recommendation from the Open Space Committee regarding an offer received from the Sezak family to donate a parcel of property to the borough. It's over on Weber Ave. Everybody read it in their packages. And they'd like to donate it, and the Open Space Committee is recommending that we take it and put in the open space inventory. I would like to see that happen.
Okay. Anybody want to have any discussion on that? Any, any objections?
You're going to need the attorney to draw that up.
Okay, thank you. Next item.
Okay, we received a, receiving file, a public hearing to be, for rate adjustment for public service, electric and gas. I'm sorry, where was that going to be held at? Terry, do you know? Yeah, just, yeah, where it's going to be so people know.
It's going to be in Morris Town on February the 22nd, 1:30 PM at the Morris County Administration Records Building, and another date on February 24th at 5:30 at Freehold Township Municipal Building in Freehold at 5:30 PM. That notice will also be on file in my office if there's any other questions. Thank you.
Anything else?
Yes, Open Space. As many people remember, there was a referendum on the ballot in November as to whether or not we should continue to take the two cents out of, on the taxes. The Open Space Committee has asked that until we can make a formal, the committee itself will make a formal presentation, that we put off making any decision on whether or not, because it was, although it was approved by the public, it's a non-binding referendum, so we still have the opportunity. Open Space has asked, it'll be sometime in March, Joe, you think? Okay. And I just wanted to say that. I didn't want people to think we, the referendum passed and we're not doing anything about it. Thank you.
Anything else?
Progress.
Thank you. Planning and zoning, Councilman Grillo?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I move that the following reports and minutes be received and filed, the planning board minutes of January 20th, 2016.
Is there a second?
Second.
Next item?
That the application received from Snookers LLC Bryant Mitchell to locate one temporary storage trailer on property known as 960 Route 9 South Pyramid Construction for the build-out of a billiards hall.
Any objections? Next item?
Notice to adjacent property and surrounding municipalities received from the city of Perth Amboy on an amendment to their master plan.
Next item?
Received the following planning board resolution, which was memorialized on February 3rd, 2016, from Saker Shoprite Site Plan Approval Block 368.07, lots 1 and 2, and Middlesex Energy Center LLC, Saraville Landfill Number 3, preliminary and final major site plan and design waivers.
Any objections? Next item?
That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Public safety, Councilman Lembo?
Public safety has no reports at this time.
Thank you. Public works, Councilwoman Kilpatrick?
No department minutes or reports to be filed, but I do have at least one comment, one, one matter of business that we need to bring up and discuss. As I started out last November with, or actually last January with, I need to revisit this issue. We need to have a real discussion here, and I'm going to call on Jay for a little assistance with this. The public works facility. We have gone down this road many, 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 many times. And what I'm looking to do right now is to really have in essence like a feasibility type study in essence, I guess, being done here. Where we really, we kind of let this fall to the wayside last year, taking a look at the properties and such that we actually have available to complete this project. I know that we have a couple of different places that we looked at last year. I would also like to have the, I guess it is the plans or the site development that we had a number of years back near that Cheesecake Road area. I want to actually bring that out and have that on the table. The conceptual plans of what that was going to actually look like. So that way, we can bring that to the council table, and we can actually have a discussion as we take a look at what our budgetary issues and so forth are, and we can really make this come to fruition rather than continually having this something that comes up year after year after year after year. The building is not getting any younger, and each year it gets a little bit more and more decrepit. So I'm wondering, I'm going to look over here to Dan really quickly. When I talk about the things that we would need to move this project forward, the conceptual plans, I think, would be important. And Jay, let me know if there's anything else that I should be asking for at this point. So the conceptual plans and the potential of any other properties that we have within the borough that could potentially fit the conceptual plans that we had at one time in Cheesecake.
In addition, I think you may want more detailed information on the building costs themselves.
Yes.
During the next phase, we would probably bring an architect on board to get a better feel from your public works department as to what they need in the building so we can come up with some better cost figures for you.
Absolutely. Okay, so then that also, because I, I do know what was, a little bit of what was discussed before, and like I, you know, I'm not looking for massive grandiose plans here. There are so many other municipalities that have moved forward with the facility that included everything from a container type, garage base and so forth, and all of that is on the table. We really just need to do what is cost efficient here, what's fiscally responsible, but also what is responsible to actually invest in our infrastructure, and that is that DPW and those men and that equipment. So any questions?
No, you probably just make an internal motion to authorize Jay to conduct that feasibility study to bring it back so then you can make an informed decision from a fiscal responsibility.
Okay, so, so then I'm going to make a motion. Just say so moved. So moved. Second. Thank you.
Just as, just as a comment before we go forward, I know Dan did a lot of research last year regarding different properties, and I know this project has been discussed for many, many years, probably since we were little tots.
Yes, and I will go back to tot-tot.
So, just, you know, it's something that, that's the right thing for the borough, and I don't know if Dan wants to give an update on what he, what research he's done and the dead ends he ran into.
Well, I think, I think one of the hardest things we have is that, first of all, we looked for an existing building in the borough, and when we did our study in the borough, and Jay helped me with the study, we only found one building that could even fit the size of our DPW. We investigated it, we tried to negotiate a little bit with it, but we, it failed, and it will continue to fail. The only other way that we can do that is build from the ground up, and there's a lot of sites in Sayerville, as we all know, that are challenging. They're challenging environmentally, they're challenging for contamination, and we need to hone in on a couple of sites or, and really narrow in. Some we own, some we don't own. The ones we own, obviously, it's less cost to us, but we have to look at what that means on a feasibility study about bringing utilities and infrastructure to a site. Those are all things that Jay can help, Jay can help us with, and, but I think conceptually, a plan has to be laid out with an architect, as Jay discussed, that's going to have to sit down with public works and probably the public works committee, and to decide what we really do need in that building. There's been a lot of square footage that's been bandied around. We, as councilman Kilpatrick said, we have to invest in our infrastructure, but I think it's, it's something that we are, you know, if you, if you want us to proceed, which apparently you do, we can move as, as judiciously as we can to do that, but we also have to make sure we bring it back to council so they can evaluate it.
Right, and that's what I'm really looking for, is what we can bring back to the council, so that way we can really make some informed decisions here. It's just beyond necessary. When we were there, just at the last storm, it was a big blizzard, I mean, there's crack down the center of the building, for crying out loud. I mean, the wall itself, from years of having, you know, years ago, we had salt that was actually there in that particular structure, and it's really eaten away at some of that wall, at that structure. There's just so many things, we could go on and on and on.
I will also say that during the storm, when Governor Christie was here and had a press conference in our Department of Public Works garage, myself and actually councilwoman Kilpatrick had a discussion with Lieutenant Governor.
Yes.
And she was also very much in favor to see how she could help us obtain even extra money or something like that to, to get a new public works building.
And she did. She gave us some direction and a couple of good ideas that we can do, and I was grateful for her comments, and to watch her face look around and to say, wow, yes, I noticed that. And, and she, she just looked and she goes, you really need to invest in this. You really need to. So, thank you, Jay.
Okay, Terry, anyone else? Terry, do the roll call, please. Yes.
Grillo.
Yes.
Kilpatrick.
Yes.
Limbo.
Yes.
Novak.
Yes.
Rittenhouse.
Yes.
And I just have one more thing. It's more on a personal note. I just wanted to say on a personal note, this, this past week was a difficult week for both me and my family. My grandfather passed away last Sunday, and I only bring it up because I've never had such an enormous outpouring of just condolences and sympathy from residents that I guess had read it in the newspaper that I didn't even really, I didn't know these people, but they either found a way to mail a car to my house, or in a couple of instances, actually came by and stopped and knocked on my door and said they were sorry to me and my grandkids. So for those people that were out there, and I didn't get to see everyone, it was, it was touching and it was moving. It's been a hard, two years for my family. I lost seven people, and, you know, up here, you don't always see the people that are watching on TV, but to all those people that, that were watching on TV and you thought of me over the week, I appreciate that, and God bless, and thank you.
And that's all. Progress.
Thank you.
Under my report, I, I'm sorry, water and sewer. Council, councilman Rittenhouse, water and sewer.
Thank you, council president. No reports at this time, and progress.
Thank you. Under my report, I request to approve the Sayerville Memorial Day Post 4699, funding for the 2016 Memorial Day Parade. Any objections?
Nope.
Okay, so just mark your calendars for that. Memorial Day Parade is the May 30th. This coming Wednesday, I'm actually part of a great event, the President's Day Naturalization Ceremony. I want to thank the American Legion for being a part, that's going to be a part of it as well. It's, it's exciting and I'm looking forward to the event. We had a meeting this past Thursday, with the recreation advisory board went very well. They have a lot of events coming up, which are posted up on our website, and we're looking to have a lot of exciting events going forward and making new events. Next, I, our appointments, the 30 days have been up, it's the council's appointments at this point for several of the seats. Going to make a motion that we appoint McKenna, Dupont, Higgins, and Stone for borough attorney for one-year term.
So. I move that the.
Do we need a second?
Okay. Second.
Roll call.
Is there any discussion?
Any discussion? Roll call.
Councilperson Buchanan.
Yes.
Yes.
Kilpatrick.
Yes.
Limbo.
Yes.
Novak.
Yes.
Rittenhouse.
No.
For special counsel, other matters, Dakota's firm.
Uh, that's, okay, second.
Dakota's firm.
Yes.
Councilperson, is there any discussion?
Any discussion? Roll call.
Councilperson Buchanan.
Yes.
Grillo.
Yes.
Kilpatrick.
Yes.
Limbo.
Yes.
Novak.
Yes.
Rittenhouse.
Yes.
One-year term litigation counsel, the firm of Weiner Lesniak.
What was that, for what position?
Weiner Lesniak for litigation counsel.
Litigation?
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Is this litigation, is this a special litigation?
This is the litigation counsel.
General litigation.
General litigation.
Did we ever?
Normally held by Blaschek and Schmuck.
Schmuck.
They didn't even put in a letter.
I'm going to vote no on that, only because they overcharged us last year on the special when they were the temple counsel. If we can get a refund from them, I'll change my mind.
Any other discussions?
Dakota's.
If not, roll call.
Councilperson Buchanan.
Yes.
Grillo.
Yes.
Kilpatrick.
Yes.
Limbo.
No.
Yes.
Rittenhouse.
No.
For the one-year municipal planner, John Leoncavello.
So moved. A second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Councilperson Buchanan.
Yes.
Grillo.
Yes.
Kilpatrick.
Yes.
Novak.
Yes.
Limbo.
Yes.
Rittenhouse.
Yes.
For the board of adjustment, a four-year member, Maria Cataldo, and a two-year alternate, number two, Anthony Esposito reappointing both members.
Second.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
Yes, I have a question. Came to my attention that Maria Cataldo is out of Sayerville for six months, and yet we're reappointing her to a board.
Didn't hear she was out for six months?
I'm not aware of that.
Where'd you get that information from?
I forget who told me, somebody told me that, that she was out, and she had indicated that if she was replaced, she wouldn't mind. I'm just saying, it's something I think you should check. If somebody's going to be out of the, not here for six months.
She sent in a letter saying that she was interested, and she showed her addresses in Sayerville?
That's fine, whatever you wish to do.
She responded, I have an application from her. I do have an address.
Yeah, it was. Okay, we have a.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilperson Buchanan.
Yes.
Yes.
Kilpatrick.
Yes.
Novak.
Yes.
Limbo.
Yes.
Rittenhouse.
No.
For the class-three position, we never filled that for the council on January 1, we're going to appoint and make a motion for Steve Grillo.
Second. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Councilperson Buchanan.
Yes.
Grillo.
Yes.
Kilpatrick.
Yes.
Novak.
Yes.
Limbo.
Yes.
Rittenhouse.
Yes.
Thank you.
For the board of health, three-year term, unexpired term for Debbie Stolti, I'm going to appoint Baltar.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, roll call. Yes.
Grillo.
Yes.
Kilpatrick.
Yes.
Novak.
Yes.
Limbo.
Yes.
Rittenhouse.
Yes.
All right, we received a couple of recommendations. We had some vacancies that were never filled in for the human relations committee, and.
Can we just back up one second?
Sure.
Council president, and back to the board of health. I just want to clarify that council liaison for the board of health is the public safety council liaison, and that is councilman Limbo.
Correct.
Thank you. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, we received a couple of applications. I'd like to appoint Joan McCarthy, Maura Speezy, and Megan Speezy to the human relations committee for your term.
Second.
That was Joan McCarthy, Megan Speezy, and the aura Speezy. Maura, I'm sorry.
Maura.
At this time, Danny, if you don't mind, there's two other applications for the Human Relations Commission, but because they moved across the street, they're now technically out of town. They have been serving on this as Sayerville residents and as Olbridge residents, but the ordinance does require residency. If, if it's all right with the rest of the council, I'd like to, the Human Relations Commission has asked me to run with this, to see if we can, if you and Terry could get together and see if you could change the ordinance to allow these two members.
This is on the Human.
Human Relations Commission, yes.
I'll sit down with Terry.
They've been members for like 12 years, and the residency, I guess nobody realized it was Parlin before, it's Parlin now, but technically, they literally live right across the line on Borden Town Avenue. You're on one side, you're in Sayerville, you're on one, one side, you're in Olbridge. And they're very active members of a lot of different things, including the parish here in, in Sayerville. Their hearts are still here. So if that's okay with everybody?
Oh, authorized.
Councilperson Buchanan.
Yes.
Grillo.
Yes.
Kilpatrick.
Yes.
Limbo.
Yes.
Novak.
Yes.
Rittenhouse.
Yes.
Danny, is there a council liaison to the Human Relations Commission, because they've asked, I've been serving in it kind of unofficially for a couple of years. Is there one supposed to be there, or just, I don't see it listed here. So there officially isn't one. Okay.
No.
I'd like to also, the council liaison, it was never done officially, to the commission on aging.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Any discussion?
This is office on aging, Terry.
Yes, okay. Councilperson Buchanan.
Yes.
Grillo.
Yes.
Kilpatrick.
Yes.
Limbo.
Yes.
Novak.
Yes.
Rittenhouse.
Yes.
Okay, for the library board of trustees, a five-year term, it's an unexpired term, expiring 2016, for Lauren Bayer.
Lauren Bayer. You're putting Lauren in for the five-year unexpired term, replacing Bob Foley?
Yes.
Okay.
And then I would be the liaison as the recreation.
Second.
Yes.
Grillo.
Yes.
Kilpatrick.
Yes.
Limbo.
Yes.
Novak.
Yes.
Rittenhouse.
Yes.
Okay, and then Mary, you want to discuss the technology board?
Yes, former councilman, Ricky Melendez sent this to me. I am writing you to give you an update, as requested, I just did something, Vic, as requested, on my search for candidates for the information, information technology advisory committee. As you requested, I reviewed the applications and the resumes to further evaluate the applicants. What I set forth was to find individuals with what I believed contained necessary technical and business skills to set up a contributing member to this group. As technology has evolved and changed, so has the range of talent and experience in the market today. I treated this process similar to my employment hiring practices for my firm. As an SR manager over the years, I've hired people in various technical and business roles. Part of my criteria was to bring people in with different backgrounds to try and cover multiple areas of technologies that we need. I am happy to say, based on the criteria, I am ready to make some recommendations. However, I do request some possible changes to the ordinance. The first two candidates I recommend would be Alex Leekind, I hope I'm saying that right, and David Melendez. Both have industry experience and certifications and educations to meet the requirements. However, in technology today, certification is not always a clear indication of one's talent and experience. The third person I reviewed and interviewed was Fred Block. He has a wealth of knowledge that I believe can be a contributing factor to this board. Though he lacks formal education, I, I.
Just push it.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, this is not mine, so I don't really know how to use it. I feel his experience supersedes requirements that he would be an additional talent we could use on this team. The purpose of the committee is to assist Tom Bracken on the technology decisions needed to move the borough forward. In addition, we hope to bridge the information gap between the borough and the people of Sayerville. The committee would also provide guidance and ideas to the councils that can approve Sayerville. The use of technology can make the borough more efficient for its employees, residents, and the governing body. So I ask, if possible, could you amend the ordinance for the four positions, for the fourth position? I will serve as chairman and work with Tom Bracken along with the members of the group. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to manage this process and serve on what I believe will be one of the most important boards in Sayerville. Respectfully, former councilman Ricky Melendez.
You need, you need a motion if you. Okay.
First, we want to.
You need to discuss it.
Clarify a motion.
First, 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 make the appointment.
Yeah.
Like, do the appointments.
You need the names?
Oh, I see, and I marked down the names.
So you, so the first, the first is the, to approve the, the appointments that, that were suggested. You need the first and the second.
You're going to make it, Danny, and I'll second it?
Well, he made recommendations for three people, so I don't know how, how to do three when he wants two.
I was.
And we only have two.
He said his first recommendations would be the first two, and then he asked us to, to increase the ordinance so that we can put Fred in.
Yeah, that's, I'll go back and read it again. I reckon, my, my, the first two candidates
I recommend would be Alex and David. Both have the industry experience, and then he says, however, and then he went on to ask us to please, he would like Fred on there also.
But you're not going to be able to put Fred on that.
Not tonight.
Right.
Until we increase the board.
So it's a motion to appoint the two individuals recommended, Alex and.
David Melendez.
David Melendez.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
You second the motion?
Mr. Grillo.
I'll take credit.
Thank you.
Councilperson Buchanan.
Yes.
Grillo.
Yes.
Kilpatrick.
Yes.
Limbo.
No.
Novak.
Yes.
Rittenhouse.
No.
I make a motion to authorize the borough attorney to add one more position to that board.
Increase ordinance for the Technology Board.
Thank you.
To include for four members.
Any discussion?
And Councilwoman Kilpatrick.
Roll call.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to point.
That's okay.
Councilperson Buchanan.
Yes.
Grillo.
Yes.
Kilpatrick.
Yes.
Limbo.
Yes.
Novak.
Yes.
Rittenhouse.
Okay, and lastly, when Councilman Grillo had to step down from SARAH, we had an opening, I'm going to appoint Dave McGill. Make a motion.
Second.
Thank you, any discussion?
Yes. I still feel that the ruling that the attorney gave was incorrect on SARAH, that I believe it, they cannot vote for appointments to that. But I, and I also will be voting no on the nominee.
Who can't vote for?
No, you know what?
Any other discussion?
Well, yes, I actually, I'm glad that you brought that up, Mr. Rittenhouse, again, the conversation that was had, the discussion that was made in reference to the SARAH designees, the, I'm trying to think what you categorized it now, state law, and then it was borough law, and then it was this law. The only reason why I'm going there and I'm bringing this up is because, quite frankly, I, I don't often watch these proceedings on TV, but I went back and I looked at the YouTube, and your conduct in addressing our attorney, Mr. Dupont, was one of the most egregious and just downright disrespectful things I have ever seen. And I would just like to take a moment here and ask for a formal apology to Mr. Dupont for the conduct and the way in which you spoke with, to him, not just once, but multiple, multiple times. We can have a discussion about, on the council, but I know I'm not the only one that had to have been offended by what took place.
You'll knock an apology because the incompetence that he's shown is clear. There's not no parliamentary procedure.
I'm not talking about parliamentary, I'm talking about human decency in the way you speak to a human being, and what I saw and what people had to watch and witness, it was just not becoming of an elected official. You can have a disagreement with an individual, you can assert yourself, but there, there is a level where it's just downright wrong. And that's really what it was, it was just downright wrong. I, I mean, I've had disagreements with the mayor, I've had disagreements with you, but you have to conduct yourself as a professional, and I just don't think that that's the way it was handled. It was just degrading, it was downright disrespectful. And quite frankly, it was embarrassing to sit this close to you at that meeting that night. And I've had residents, when I'm in the shop, right, that have stopped me and said, that was one of the most deplorable things they'd ever seen on the TV.
Works both ways, Councilwoman.
Again, I know I don't hold myself to the, if you're insinuating that I conduct myself in that level, I can, I know I do not. And it was just degrading and deplorable, and I think as an individual here that is an attorney and that is, you know, up here to do a job, it's just completely disrespectful. And I have to go to bed every night looking out, and I, and look at my daughters and say, what kind of a, what kind of role models do I want my children to see? And that definitely was not what I want my children to see in elected officials. So if you choose not to have that apology, I can't ask for anything more, but it is on the record that you won't even take the moment to turn around and say that our attorney does deserve some form of professional respect.
Any other comments? Roll call.
I had a motion, I didn't hear a second.
Second.
Councilperson Buchanan.
Yes.
Grillo.
Yes.
Kilpatrick.
Yes.
Limbo.
No.
Novak.
Yes.
Rittenhouse.
No.
Just one more piece of housekeeping, the Board of Adjustment, Steve was never appointed to the council liaison position.
Are you moving it? I'll second it.
I am.
Okay, I second.
Thank you. Just one last thing regarding my, oh, I'm sorry. Roll call.
Councilperson Buchanan.
Yes.
Grillo.
Yes.
Kilpatrick.
Yes.
Novak.
Yes.
Limbo.
Yes.
Rittenhouse.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry had, Rec. Director Jerry S. had knee surgery last week, he's doing well, he's in rehabilitation for it. So our thoughts go out to Jerry and everything he's going through right now with his recovery from his knee surgery. Just, just to follow what Councilwoman Kilpatrick and Mr. Councilman Rittenhouse were discussing. Now, we went over the ordinance, the law, whatever we discussed, and the point that we're discussing was that a councilperson can't send a representative to represent themselves. You can't vote to send a representative themselves on SARAH, not to vote for themselves to be appointed to SARAH. And there's some times that we're right, sometimes we're wrong, and when you're wrong, you should admit that we're wrong. And this is a time that you should admit that you're wrong, and no one deserves to be spoken to like that. And that's the end of my report. Go on to, Mr. Frankel, your report.
Thank you, Council President. Request for authorization to execute a memorandum of agreement with the New Jersey Turnpike Authority and the Borough of Sayerville for the Garden State Parkway interchange 125 improvements, and request for authorization to approve the recommended utility order documents authorizing the New Jersey Turnpike Authority to relocate and install water mains, et cetera, along Chevalier Avenue and Main Street Extension.
Any objections, next item?
Resolution from SARAH recommending that the borough consider
Back that up a little bit. I know in speaking with Jay that one of these items were ready to go, we could have a resolution on, but we really needed the borough returning to review, I believe it was item number two.
Item number one is, was sent over in a draft form for comment, so that one, I don't think you're ready for having executed, you want, just refer number one to Mr. Dupont for review and comment.
Thank you.
The second one has to do with the water line relocations, that's gone back and forth with Mr. Smith, your director, and that one is ready to take action on.
That one's ready for, thank you. Thanks, Tara, thank you.
Next item?
Resolution from SARAH recommending that the borough consider entering into a pilot agreement with the Sayerville Seaport Urban Renewal Entity LP regarding real property located at the former, former NLSite.
Any objections?
What are we doing with it?
Is any accommodation going to be made for this pilot program for education, for the Board of Education? I mean, I think we need to think ahead this time, 2,000 units.
It's, it's my understanding that in this particular agreement, there's already a $19 million allocation to the Board of Education.
Well, that'll probably go to build a building, and then we have to staff it.
I know that the law firm of Dakota's has been negotiating this. It's my recommendation at the next council meeting, have Dakota's come in and explain the pilot and where they are with respect to negotiations. I know that this has been a lengthy process. I don't think they're close to fruition, but they are, you know, getting some of the i's dotted and t's crossed. So my recommendation is to have Mr., I forgot his name is, well, anyways, the attorney from Dakota's who's been negotiating with, with all parties concerned.
Okay. Anything else?
So we're just going to, not going to do anything with this until we have the Dakota's firm come before us.
Request for authorization to renew the radio system maintenance agreement with RF Design and Integration of Philadelphia through the New Jersey State Contract for a period of January 2016 through June of 2016 in an amount not to exceed $22,000.
Any objections? Next item.
Authorization to appoint Jeffrey Schnitzer to the title of clerk three as per the New Jersey Civil Service promotional procedures.
Any objections?
Under Recreation, I would like to tell you that I was approached by Mickey Gross, the councilman from South Amboy. I just want to pass it by council, so it's publicly announced. Perth Amboy and South Amboy is having a July 4th celebration again on July 2nd. They have asked us to consider joining with them on July 2nd. I believe I know the answer, but I just want to make sure I take a straw poll by the council. Is anybody in favor of working with Perth Amboy and South Amboy to share our, our July 4th?
I believe that's the date that we have scheduled.
We have July 2nd as well, correct.
When you say share with, I mean, just if I, I mean
I'm saying that we want to do, do we want to work, we want to do our own?
I like ours.
Everybody's okay with that?
I like ours.
Thank you very much, I'll go back and let them know that.
I think we do a hell of a job, our Recreation Department, and I think we should stay with our
Each year against the beggar and beggar, it's great.
Authorization to extend a contract of sewer pump station maintenance and repair with municipal maintenance company of Cinnamons in New Jersey for one additional year.
Any objections? Next item.
Authorization to award contract for census water meters and related equipment to HD Waterworks Supply, LTD of Edison, New Jersey, for purchases on an as-needed basis.
Any objections, next item.
Authorization to advertise for the receipt of bids for Water Department Chemicals.
Any objections?
Request for authorization to appoint Jody Klosick to the title of keyboarding clerk three as per New Jersey Civil Service promotional procedures.
Any objections?
And on a fantastic and happy note, which we should have up here, Wayne was not able to make the last meeting because Wayne is a grandfather for the second time, so congratulations. That's it.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Wayne, always nice to have something good to say.
Thank you.
The first item I have, and the only item really, is transfer resolution. I just would like to make a con, or make it known that the council is meeting next week for a budget workshop meeting on Wednesday, the 17th, at 5:30. It's been advertised, so you'll be receiving information regarding the budget over the weekend with the mail. So if you have any questions prior to the meeting, either Tuesday or Wednesday, please give me a call, but, you know, the department heads will be there, they're scheduled, or the business administrator is going to schedule them, so they're not all waiting there at, at one time, you know, to, to make their presentations or answer questions on, on the budget. So we're moving ahead on it, we're getting closer to, to our goal, I think. I was speaking with the business administrator and the chairman of the Administration and Finance Committee this morning about it, so we'll see where we can go from there, okay?
Council President, can I recommend that we hold that meeting in here so we can televise it, and there's more room rather than being crowded into the 310? It is an advertised meeting.
It's been advertised for that room, right?
No, borough.
The chairman, whoever the chairman, if the chairman so chooses.
I've found it more comfortable to, to be in 310 when we're sitting across the table from one another. I mean, that, that's the way, you know, we've done it, and we even did it last year. Usually, the, there's one or two people from the public that come, it's mostly borough employees that come, and it's a, it's a much more productive work environment, I think, between the council and the department heads.
Anything else? Borough engineer?
Thank you, Mayor. First item we've already discussed and taken action on, second item's the Morgan force main replacement. If you recall, last summer, we had a problem with the force main at your Morgan pumping station, it failed, there was a temporary force main put in place. We prepared plans for a replacement, but that required an easement to be obtained on the adjacent property. Mr. Dupont was successful after a number of months going back and forth with Transcontinental Gas, which owned the property. He obtained a right-of-entry agreement to allow that project to move forward. So we're recommending that you have a resolution authorizing the execution of that right-of-entry agreement, and also awarding a contract to the borough's emergency contractor, BMW, to allow them to proceed with the construction. And you did introduce an ordinance that appropriates the funding necessary to move forward. So as long as that ordinance is approved at your next meeting, you'll be able to award a contract and also sign that right-of-entry agreement to get that project going.
Thank you.
And then the next item is the improvements to Cath Street. You have a contractor that's reconstructing Cath Street. There's an existing business on the corner of Route 35 and Cath Street that is currently serviced by a septic system. That owner approached Mr. Smith, your utilities director, about trying to connect into the sanitary sewer. If you extend the gravity sewer main approximately 400 feet, you'll be able to go through and allow that septic system to be abandoned. So Mr. Smith recommended that that be done in conjunction with the road reconstruction work on Cath Street. You'd have to approve a change order to that contract. The ordinance that Wayne introduced this evening has money to appropriate to allow that project to move forward as well. So as long as there's no objection, you'll have the ordinance at your next meeting, and if that's approved, we can have a change order to allow that septic system to be abandoned.
Thank you, are there any objections? Anything else?
Thank you.
Do you have anything for executive session? Okay, then I'd like to open the public portion for questions and comments on all items. Anybody have a question, comment, concern? Deborah?
Dan, one more, I have one more housekeeping thing to do with the committees before we adjourn.
Barbara Kilcombe, it's 22 Schmitt Street. I have a question for Mr. Frankel. Did we have the sale of equipment?
Can you define what you mean equipment?
Pardon me?
Can you define what you mean by the word equipment?
The, what were up for auction at Fort Grumpy?
Yes.
All the, how many pieces of equipment were auctioned off?
I don't have the exact number. It was as one group.
And what was the amount that we received?
I'm going to defer to
I don't remember offhand, I'm thinking in terms of between 13 and 15,000, something like that, 13,000?
I'm not, I don't have the number with me. I can get it. If you wanted to call, if you wanted to call the QPA tomorrow, or call me tomorrow, I could probably get you the number.
Or call me.
Or call Wayne, call Wayne tomorrow.
And my question was, was it sold in a bulk for one bidder, for everything?
Yes.
Well, I did a little homework, I called several mayors that happened to be friends of mine, and a business administrator, and they have never done that in their community. And I think what you did was a disservice to the residents, because you probably would have gotten more money if it was sold individually. And a few complaints I received were from individuals that wanted to purchase a truck, or wanted to purchase one. And maybe I'm incorrect in saying it wasn't legal, but it was certainly unethical. And this is borough-owned property, and to put it in one lump sum, someone had to buy everything, I think was totally unfair. And I think you would have received more money if it was done individually. And the last time, I was told, we went all the way to Hamilton, put it online, because it would have been more feasible. Now, we changed the rules, it's done at Fort Grumpy. One, I, I'm still looking into it, I have a call into the Department of Community Affairs, to the purchasing department. And after speaking to these mayors, he said they couldn't believe that Sayerville would do this. Why? They said it's not feasible for just one bid for everything. So I think you're ripping off the taxpayers, basically. It's their equipment and all, again. We just don't care about the taxpayers in this town as far as any type of revenue, be it pilots, and now it's even maybe a small little sale, but it's wrong. When someone wants to buy a truck and they can't go bid on a truck, it's wrong. My other question is, there is equipment behind the police department, I believe that came from surplus, from Fort Dix?
Surplus from the armed forces, correct.
From the armed forces.
From Fort Dix, but from the armed forces.
And was that given to the town of Sayerville, or just given to the police department, or?
It's under the insurance, and it's under the borough for Sayerville, correct.
And the reason I'm bringing this up is, Homdel used one of the trucks that they received from the army, whatever. Six, six, what is it, six-wheel drive, I'm not familiar with that, I don't drive a truck, or I don't know, but it was, they put a plow on it, and a salt spreader, and it went through everything. And I can't believe it, that we have the same equipment and we're not utilizing it. So we could have used that equipment instead of purchasing everything brand new, and some of the equipment we purchased, that I heard, even the motors went and all, because it couldn't handle the heavy snow. And here we have equipment sitting behind the police department that's not being utilized. So I'd look into that if I were you. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara, anyone else? If not, entertain a motion.
Public portion be closed.
A second.
All those in favor? Aye. Close.
And before we close, I just want to, I forgot to mention this before, just a little bit of, I guess, housekeeping, if you will, under the Recreation Advisory Board, we had listed Thomas Polando as a new applicant. And it's my understanding that Mr. Polando has a lot of things going on in his world. I believe he's just been appointed to the county, what is it, planning?
Vice Chair.
Vice Chair of the, congratulations, the Vice Chair of the County Planning. So with that, I think that would be fair to remove his name as a new applicant for a Recreation Advisory Board.
Send me an email.
What?
Can you just send me an email withdrawing his application?
Withdrawing the application? Excellent, and there was one more piece of housekeeping I really should have taken care of at my time. With a snowstorm quickly approaching and that, and the amounts changing by the minute, I just want to remind I just want to remind residents out there that, you know, there's a couple of things you need to do in order to make sure that your street gets plowed efficiently, it's make sure that your vehicles are off the street. Well, aside from me being able to go and like move people's vehicles, which I actually did move two, but, you know, this was put out by our Director of Public Works, it was on the TV, emails were sent, I know that some people complained it wasn't put on the reverse 911.
It's up to the chief.
That's up to the chief to do. Right now, the camera is on, I know that you can get this on YouTube, so anybody watching tonight, if your vehicle's on the road, be prepared, get it off there so we can do our job. Also, make sure that, you know, you, you clear your sidewalk so that the kids can, can walk, and please make every effort to just stay safe and just make sure you're not on the road if, in fact, we do have to call for, you know, schools to be closed, let us do our jobs. Okay? So, thank you, that's all.
Anything else? Motion for German?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, have a good night, everyone.
Should I worry about this being left here? Applications, do we have to worry about that, is it like personnel?